Mrs. Crowe?
Here.
Mrs. Doc Angel.
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Freudel?
Yes.
Mr. Iavino?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Altrino?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Superintendent Smith?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Saban?
Yes.
Assistant Superintendent Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver? Assistant Representative Caitlin Aber?
Thank you. First item is the approval of minutes for the meeting of the regular session, March 9, 2009. We'll take the appropriate motion on that unless there are any alterations, addition, deletion. So, move by Mr. Iavino, seconded by Ms. Rivera Rogers. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is public comment. And now is time for anyone here who would seek to address the committee.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Steele. I'm the Director of the Partnership for Community Schools in Malden. And I had a really nice little speech to give everybody this evening about the value of summer programming that the PCSM provides and, you know, the quality and the model that we've provided for all of the after-school programming around the area. And I found just a few minutes before the meeting that we actually don't need to have quite this whole speech, so I'll save you about five minutes. You know, I know that it is an issue that the superintendent is going to bring before you this evening regarding summer program. One of the issues, he and I have been working very closely on this, and one of the issues is the cost of the utilities for the summer. PCSM has agreed to pick up 50 percent of the costs that it would, what it would cost to, what do we call it here? Air control handlers at the BB school. So, we will pick up 50 percent because we would be in 50 percent of the building. And I think that's an agreeable solution. So, if I'll have you, you know, talk about it in a short while, then it's something that PCSM would support. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Ms. Steele. Public comment portion is still open. Now is the time for anyone else who is not out there to address the, address the school committee. Seeing none, we'll consider that portion of the meeting closed and move on to item number three, superintendents' reports.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before I start with reports, I do want to give congratulations, some recently received congratulations. I'd like to thank Ms. Rivera Rogers for giving us this information. And these congratulations are to Gillian Wilcox from the Forestale School. Gillian has been nominated and invited to the Junior National Young Leaders Conference in Washington, DC this summer. And Gillian was selected due to her scholastic merit, academic achievement, maturity, and leadership skills. And she'll be involved in six days of scheduled events in and around Washington, DC, all paid for. And congratulations to Gillian and her family, and thank you, Ms. Rivera Rogers. Appreciate that. And now to the reports. I have a document I just want to share with you. Pass out either side. This has to do with calculations that were done most recently, completed today-
Thank you.
-relatives to the utilization of our buildings for summer programs for this coming summer. The computations were generated out of just an interest to determine what the costs were in each of the buildings anyway, but most particularly as a product of conversations with Partnership for Community Schools about what would the energy cost be for a second school to open in addition to Salemwood. Let me walk through this a little bit with you. It's not necessarily immediately evident. The energy cost, bless you, I was able to determine the energy cost for the summer of 2008. At BB, the energy cost for the months of July and August were $36,409. If you considered what that cost would be for the five weeks that the PCSM programs are in operation, that would be adjusted to $22,755 for five weeks. I also did calculations for Salemwood just to give a comparison cost. You'll notice that cost is a little bit lower for the summer of 2008, even though Salemwood is a larger building. That's really just a function of the extent to which the building was utilized and what zones may have been shut off at any point in time. Then I calculated, I've talked with Mike Sullivan a great deal about how best to calculate the actual costs that we are talking about, which have to do with turning on the air control handlers for the building during the summer. And in the months of July and August, he estimated that 90 percent of the energy costs are attributed to the air control handlers. So, if you calculated 90 percent of that $22,755 for those five weeks, the cost is $20,480 in energy costs. So, the cost of the utilization of half of the building, you have to turn on the air control handlers for the front or the back or both, but you cannot turn them on for smaller units of space. So, were PCSM to occupy one side of the building, the front or the back, the cost would be half of that $20,480, which is $10,240. Now, I can run through much of the rest of it, except I think if in fact PCSM is able to pick up the cost of that $10,240, that would take care of the energy concerns that I had about opening a second space for PCSM. The other information on here is really just data to show that all of the programs that we had been discussing at the previous meeting could in fact fit into a single wing at Salemwood. That's immaterial if in fact, from my point of view, as my recommendation, if in fact PCSM can pay that $10,240 to open up the second, or to, I'm sorry, turn on the air control handlers on that second half of BB. The reason why I say the second half is that regardless of which side the custodians are working on, half of the air control handlers have to be on in BB at any point in time because the custodians would be on one side and PCSM would be on the other. That's the cost of, the extra cost for turning on the other half of the building. So, I would recommend that we, again, if PCSM is able to handle those costs, that we in fact have our summer programs at both Salemwood and at BB.
Questions on the report? Mr. Altrino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a quick question. Superintendent, the, first of all, why the BB and maybe not the Ferryway or Linden or the Early Learning Center?
Two reasons. A, it was to respond to that portion of town, the west portion of town, but also in response to PCSM in terms of the school that was most, a most critical second school in order to get as many students engaged in the program. That's where BB came up.
And do we have other organizations besides PCSM using summer program, using the schools for summer programs?
We do. We have the YWCA, and Ms. Crowe and I talked about that earlier this morning, and we, I think that we've come up to an amenable solution that would work so that the students in the YW program could meet at Ferryway in the morning-
Okay.
...and could be transported by bus from Ferryway to Salemwood and use the Salemwood facility for the summer program.
And the PACE program, is that-
PACE program.
Is that Linden?
Right. Well, the PACE program, right, we have the PACE program at Linden. We also have a number of other special ed programs that will need to run during the summer, that will need to have 11 classrooms of space that will also need to be air-conditioned.
Right.
And I'm now in conversations with, trying to close out conversations with the special ed program about where exactly that can be located. I talked with Mike Sullivan about that, and he assured me that wherever they are, we can put 11 rooms on day program for air conditioning and the remainder of the building on night program so that the air conditioning would go only to those 11 rooms and provide air conditioning just to that space.
No matter what school you choose?
Regardless of what, well, as long as it's not Malden High.
Right.
Regardless of which school.
And there, all the groups that are involved in summer programs have been notified?
Counted four?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, yes, I mean, I have talked to the different groups prior to this meeting. Obviously, we haven't notified them of the results yet, but yes, I've contacted them.
And they're okay with pitching in, or are they-
Well, the single, the single organization that I've asked to pitch in is PCSM.
Okay.
Okay? And they have agreed to the $10,240, as I understand it.
And the city will, the school department will pick up the other half? Is that correct?
Well, the other half is where the custodians are going to be working anyway.
Have to be.
So, we need to have the air control handlers on there anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions on summer school usage report? Ms. Doc Angel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Smith-
Thank you, Mr. Altrino.
Sorry. As far as the PACE classrooms moving up to the Salemwood, have, have you been in discussions with the Director of Special Ed about the computer problems? Well, not the computer problems.
Yes. And I'm not making the assumption that they are going to move to Salemwood right now. And we're talking about the unique equipment and all of the, you know, the complications involved with that. Whether those 11 classrooms are at Linden, at Salemwood, or what have you, they would need to, we would need to put air conditioning in them. If they are at Linden, then we will have the custodians work on that portion of the building during the time that they are there. So, the air control handlers would be on anyway, and as long as we can localize the space where we give the air conditioning, as Mike Sullivan assures me, we're fine.
And the computer situation would be the same?
And the computer situation would be taken care of.
So, is there a possibility that it would be BB and Linden as opposed to BB and Salemwood, or it would be perhaps all three?
No. It would, it would need to be BB and Salemwood, and then the 11 classrooms for the kids would be, in this case, would be Linden.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doc Angel. Other questions?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Correct me if I'm wrong. We, the first proposal was to keep one school open-
Right.
...to save utility costs. Now, we're talking about two or three schools as long as half, I don't understand-
Right. Well, I think, the, we're really talking about a second school in terms of increased costs.
Right.
And that would be at BB.
Okay.
At Linden, as long as the custodians, we again break it up so that that, in this case, the programs for the special needs students would be in the same wing during that time that they are working in. The air control handlers have to be on in any case. So, it's, it's really, we're not really incurring an additional cost. The only thing that we would be doing that we would not otherwise, well, actually, we would otherwise be doing, we have to provide those classrooms with air conditioning, those 11 classrooms.
Those 11 classrooms.
Yes. Regardless of where they are in the city.
So, when you made the initial proposal of that one school, didn't, wouldn't you have taken into consideration that we would have had have kept the other schools open anyways for the custodians, the equality and stuff like that?
Yes. But for example, if we, if we had everybody at Salemwood, we would only have to have at BB one side of the building, the air control handlers on.
For the custodians?
For the custodians.
Okay.
So, that's where we save the cost.
Right.
And then, and then at the, at the end of the summer programs, BB may in fact be fully clean at that point in time, and so we could shut down the-
Okay.
...all of the air control handlers at that point. Because the summer program is only five weeks in length, it's over by the end of July in any case, we will, we, it's kind of a, it's the same situation. I mean, where, where we would be shutting down the same amount of space at the end of July in any case.
Okay. Except for the custodians.
Except for the custodians.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altrino. Other questions?
Ms. Crowe.
Ms. Crowe?
Actually, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know Sydney spoke this morning, but I didn't realize that even paying for the things was an option. So, I hope if we do decide to go that direction, if there's another option for my agency to, you know, to take that up and see if that's something that they would be willing to do.
I would be very happy to entertain that.
Okay.
It's, a lot of this happened today when I was finally able to get hard numbers-
Right. Exactly.
...on the energy utilization. I didn't get it until this morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Iavino?
Mr. Smith, the numbers, the hard numbers that you're making reference to, these are the ones on the opposite side of the page.
On the opposite side. That's correct. Yep.
All right. That would help me in terms of building and grounds as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Iavino. So, do we have a, an agreed-upon plan for summertime usage, or are you-
I am proposing that as a, as an agreed-upon plan-
Right.
...for summer utilization. Is that we would, we would have the Salemwood school open as well?
Partnership for Community School?
I'm sorry?
Salemwood is available for partnership for Community Schools?
Well, Salemwood would also, yes, Partnership for Community Schools would also be utilizing some space at Salemwood School.
As well as, what else is there?
As well as at BB.
Oh, but anything else at Salemwood?
Yes. At Salemwood, we will, we will have the middle school, summer school there. So, PCSM would be in the same wing that the summer school would be occupying in any case, and they run for the same five weeks.
And potentially, the YWCA program might move from Ferryway to Salemwood.
To Salemwood.
But that's at least open for discussion?
That is open for discussion.
As to whether or not the YW would consider paying the utility bills similar to what the partnership is proposing to do with the BB?
That is correct.
Okay. So, partnership, middle school, potentially YW at Salemwood. The partnership at BB in an isolated wing.
Yep.
And the PACE program, to be determined?
To be determined. And as of right now, because of the particular, the equipment and the facility uniqueness of where they are at Linden School, it looks like we are probably, they are probably going to be at Linden School.
Everybody follow? Any other questions? Okay. Anything else on the superintendent's reports?
I have one item. It was at the end of last week, I, on the request of, Mr. Altrino distributed the budget to all of the members, the budget that was discussed during the Budget Committee meeting last week to all members of the school committee. I'm prepared, if it's the will of the committee, to review those numbers today, even though, or this evening, even though that was not on the agenda.
There's budgetary information in the packet. We can take that up as the committee would see fit. This is not the public hearing on the budget. This is informational for non-budgetary decision purposes only. Mr. Altrino, on behalf of the Budget Subcommittee. You're on. Sorry. You're on. Now you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Budget Subcommittee met, I believe it was last Tuesday on the 17th, and the superintendent put forth a quick, two-sided document which outlined some of his potential cuts and possibly any effects on stimulus Title I and something, very comprehensive. What I did ask the superintendent is if he wanted to mention it, if the committee as a whole had questions. We do have three Subcommittee meetings already planned. The next one is April 1st, I believe, at the Linden School at 5:30. What I did contact Ms. Ronzio today is what I'd like to see is each member of the school committee have a copy of the full budget line by line and can compare it with this, have till April 1st to at least look at it, forward their questions to the Budget Subcommittee because at that time, other members who are not on, cannot speak because you'd have a quorum. But I think it would, it was practice under Ms. Bucci that we did have the budget and we could start comparing it because we do need to field questions on the outside on what is in the budget and what is not. So, I think it would give a couple of weeks for each committee member to take a look at the budget line by line, where we're spending dollar by dollar, compare it to the superintendent's recommendation, and then the Budget Subcommittee would be happy to forge your questions onto the superintendent at that time. And I think that's probably the best way to go, but it's again open to other members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altrino. Questions on Chairperson's recommendations? And Mr. Freudel?
Mr. Altrino. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Altrino, we will, when we get, and we'll get a copy of the budget line item by line item.
I, I-
It's my understanding that we have, as a school committee, we have line item veto also. I mean, could you maybe explain that?
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead.
It's, you do. The, the way the budget works is the Budget Subcommittee will make a recommendation after all of the deliberations and hearing from other members of the school committee. And it's only fair to do that once you have all the information rather than a two-page. This two-page is very helpful because it shows you the initial 51-plus positions that may be recommended. But school committee members do have the right, and the chairman can correct me if I'm wrong, not vote for the budget because of certain line items or anything that he or she is not in agreement with. But the best way to do that is looking through the line items and questioning because not only do you have to answer to the people in your ward, you should know what's in the budget, but you also have the obligation to let the Subcommittee know so that we have no surprises when the vote goes to the entire school committee. But yes, to answer your question, Mr. Freudel, you can contest anything or add recommendations, anything.
Okay. Thank you. Through, through, Mr. Chairman, one other question, Steve. Would it be better if we hold off our questions until the first open meeting?
Well, you can't make questions at the Budget Subcommittee meetings, but you can pass them to a Budget Subcommittee person. But it would make sense to have the whole budget in front of you rather than just saying, oh, well, that, I don't like that. Well, you may not know what's involved in that, but it would give you at least till April 1st. And we have three more meetings. The budget's not going to be passed right away to make recommendations. And of course, as the superintendent mentioned, stimulus and Title I and IDEA money may come in, which will drastically affect his recommendations. I suggest that you look at the line item budget question, make recommendations, make them known to the Budget Subcommittee so that your questions and concerns can be answered. You could have general questions. I can't stop you from asking a question, but at the Subcommittee meetings, no. If, you have to be a member of the Subcommittee because then you would have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions on the left? I saw Ms. Doc Angel. Did you have, no, I'm sorry. Mr. Winslow?
Yeah. I just would like to support Mr. Altrino's recommendation to have the whole committee get full budgets. I'd be more than happy to either get a paper copy or something on compact disc in an Excel format so that we can really look comprehensively. We know it's going to be a tough budget year, and we need to understand that, especially me being a newer member, to understand what's going on. So, I definitely support that.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Other questions? Otherwise, we'll direct the Budget Subcommittee to take on that task through the superintendent to get the members the appropriate information between now and, your first scheduled meeting is April 1st at the Linden School?
That's correct.
And then expect several thereafter?
We booked three so far, and I don't have the exact dates of the other two, but I believe Ms. Ronzio does.
All right. So noted. The committee members can expect their information in the mail, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the superintendent's-
Well, this is just one other item. Just a reminder to committee members, this was mentioned at the last meeting, I believe, but on Monday evening at 6:30 at the Jenkins Auditorium at the high school, there will be a community meeting in regards to the high school renovations, when a presentation will be made by the mayor, Mr. Brown, the Gilbane and other partners involved in the renovations, as well as I. So, want to invite all, all of you to that meeting, again, at 6:30 at Jenkins Auditorium on Monday. And that's it for my report.
Any questions on that portion of the report? Seeing none, we'll move along to item number three, deliberations. Subcommittee updates on the deliberations. We heard a little bit about finance. Do we have any other Subcommittee reports? Ms. Rivera Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Policy Subcommittee meeting met earlier this evening with Mr. Duffy chairing it, and I'd like to have Mr. Duffy give the report.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you. We met earlier this evening. There were two items that we discussed. First of all, the calendar. Because of first possible further changes to the calendar due to budget constraints, the calendar is going to be tabled for two more weeks before we bring it back to the full committee. And then the data access policy, that will be brought forth this evening for a vote of the full committee. Thank you.
Any other Subcommittee business? Ms. Rivera Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we were discussing, as a matter of fact, past meeting, you received the elementary and secondary educational data warehouse data access policy and contract. There was a recommendation for a change in it that the superintendent made. I'd like to move this for a vote from the committee as a whole.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rivera Rogers. Second, by Mr. Winslow. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So done. On the Subcommittee's recommendation. Any other Subcommittee business? Points of personal privilege. We'll move along pretty quickly. On the right, Ms. Crowe? Mr. Altrino?
I just want to give two points of personal privilege. One is to Ms. Crowe, who will be honored on Thursday by the Zonta Club, is that correct? For women making a difference. And Ms. Crowe is one of the honorees, not only because of her work at the YWCA, but all across Malden. Her heart's always in the right place, and it's about time someone recognizes her for her hard work. So, I want to congratulate her on that as well. Again, it's Thursday night at Anthony's in 6 o'clock, I believe. Correct? So, I hope to see her colleagues there to show her support. And the second is to Mr. Iavino, who is president of the Malden Kiwanis Club. Last week, he had a fundraiser, and it was geared just towards children. The Kiwanis, as you know, does amongst many other institutions, does a lot. It was very successful. And hats off to her wife for that sweet table, which is the reason I went, so. But I want to personally thank, not only as a member of the Kiwanis Club, but Mr. Iavino, this last year as president, has, you know, gone above and beyond what most Kiwanis have, are able to do. And that, that one night was just spectacular. So, kudos to you, Ms. Iavino. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altrino. So, good recognition. Mr. Duffy?
Yes, sir. I'd also like to make another announcement for parents out there about this Thursday night. Healthy Malden will be holding a Not My Kid event at the Salemwood School starting at 6 o'clock. It's Drug Prevention Strategies for Parents. Your children are welcome to come because the YWCA will be providing childcare. They're not allowed to be there during the presentation because we give lots of good strategies on how to keep them from starting on drugs before it starts. And then also, just another reminder, on April 18th is the annual Healthy Kids Day. It's Healthy Malden's big bike helmet giveaway with the help of the Malden Kiwanis. And I just want to get it on people's radar to make sure that they're ready to come down to the Y that day and get a whole lot of good bike stuff and summer safety programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Just to reiterate, a congratulations to Peg Crowe. Peg, very, very deserving of the honor, and we will see you there Thursday night. Thank you.
Mr. Freudel?
I'd like to, also want to, Peg Crowe, and also in the same program, Mary Ann Seeger, an art teacher at the high school, is being honored. I've worked with her for quite a few, I'd hate to say how many years, but she's done a very good job. She really puts her heart and soul into working with the kids at the high school, and she truly deserves this honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freudel. Ms. Rivera Rogers?
Much madness, as usual, goes on for the Neighborhood Basketball League. The Pistons won this year. So, congratulations to the players from Malden High School, Malden Catholic, and surrounding schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to congratulate everybody from the Forestale PTO for the great night we had with Harlem Wizards last week. And it was a lot of fun, and thank everybody for coming out for that and them organizing that. I also just wanted to say on April 4th, on Saturday, April 4th, the 6:30 Salem Club is having indoor yard sale, so people can come out to that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow.[1789.28] Thank you, Mr. Winslow. And Ms. Doc Angel?
I also, I also wanted to congratulate Forestale PTO and Mr. Winslow and Mr. Smith for participating in the Malden Magic versus the Wizards game. It was a lot of fun, and I'm sure all 300 or so people enjoyed it as much as may. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't see any other lights for any other comments, so I think we're done. In record time, we need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting, Ms. Crowe is... Nine.
Nine.
Is it April 9th? Please. Monday, the 9th? Six. Next meeting, April 6th.
All right, I'll be there on the 6th instead of the 9th.